Special meeting of the City Council of the City of Fredericksburg. Before we begin our meeting tonight, I think it appropriate that we have a moment of silence for our friends in Pittsburgh and specifically at the Tree of Life synagogue. We will keep all of these families in their hearts. We will be led in invocation this evening by Councilor Matthew Kelly, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Please stand.
Most merciful Father, please bring peace to those in distress and comfort to those in pain, especially those in Pittsburgh who lost family members. Keep them in comfort and peace and help them along and their extended families. And especially help us and our community and our nation come together so we can stand shoulder to shoulder against the hatred and bigotry that brought this event about. Also stand with our men and women in uniform, both home and abroad, as they do their job to protect our safety also. Bring them home safely to their families in the evening and keep them and all their loved ones safe. As always, we ask that you help us make the best decisions for all the residents of the city of Fredericksburg and always remind us that we are here to serve and not be served. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Officer Worthy, thank you or Deputy Worthy, thank you for being with us this evening. Councilor Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a point of privilege, I just wanted to give my wife Stephanie a happy anniversary and thank you very much for staying married to me, allowing me to be here tonight. So I love you. Thank you.
Okay. So you're off the hook for going to a meeting tonight. All righty. We have on our agenda next a time for comments from the public for those who have signed up to speak before the meeting. But since this is a special meeting and basically on one topic, if there's anyone else who would like to speak to some of the matters before us tonight, feel free to after I call on the people who have signed up. We have two people who signed up ahead. The first is John Gerlock.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. My comment, or my name is John Gerlock. I'm the Chair of the Architectural Review Board. I live at 809 Charlotte Street, Fredericksburg. My comments tonight have to do with the proposed CPACE ordinance on tonight's agenda. Every day, people walk our downtown sidewalks and admire the city's many old buildings. Fredericksburg is known worldwide as a historical jewel in that regard. The historic district is the goose that lays the golden eggs, if you will. It's an irreplaceable resource for local businesses and our tax base, providing employment, economic growth, and quality of life in the city. Maintaining what we have is a constant challenge. Some buildings are in disrepair and in need of attention. The danger, of course, is that deferred maintenance can lead to buildings reaching the point of no return, being uninhabitable or commercially untenable through neglect. Excuse me. Every few years, another contributing structure in the historic district succumbs to demolition by neglect. The recent examples were on Caroline Street and Sophia Street. The ARB, HFFI, UMW, staff and City Council, all of us have talked about the critical need to spotlight and find ways to avoid demolition by neglect. There is an economic reality here. Preservation can be expensive. Cost is frequently a barrier to saving or reusing an old building. It reminds me of a corny joke. Yes, there are historic preservation jokes. Maybe not as many as lawyer jokes, but there's some good ones. It goes something like this. A French Treasury Minister was asked how she felt after extensive renovations had been made to the Royal Palace at Versailles. She said, "Baroque." I told you it was corny.
That was bad.
I'm almost done. The Historic Preservation Working Group has been addressing ways to incentivize the restoration and rehabilitation of buildings in the historic district and Fredericksburg at large. The historic tax credit program through the DHR and the tax abatement program through the city are two such methods. Both are underutilized. The facade loan program through Main Street, partly funded by the EDA, is another tool. The Historic Preservation Working Group is also looking at the possibility of some sort of low-interest loan program. This is where we get to CPACE. CPACE is a promising tool. It's not just a program for energy efficiency, it's also a tool for historic preservation. It provides financial incentives for qualifying improvements to certain buildings that are at least forty years old, improvements that make rehabilitation and restoration more cost-effective. Similar CPACE programs have a successful track record of preserving historic buildings in other jurisdictions. Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and Florence, Colorado in particular, come to mind. As we aim to incentivize historic preservation and avoid more instances of demolition by neglect, CPACE will be a useful arrow in the quiver of financial tools. I applaud Mr. Freeling for spearheading this and Ms. Dooley for drafting the ordinance. Council should move this forward and adopt the ordinance on its second read on November thirteenth. And then I have one brief announcement. This Saturday, from noon to 2:00 PM at the Courtyard Marriott, Main Street, Fredericksburg, in cooperation with Dovetail Cultural Resources Group and University of Maryland Washington Preservation Department, will be hosting a program on the historic tax credit program in Virginia. So I encourage everyone who's got, lives in a historic building and is interested in rehabbing and rehabilitating it to attend that workshop and ask questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person who has signed up ahead is Roy Gratz.
Mayor Greenlaw and members of the council, my name is Roy Gratz. I live at 1007 Albert Reynolds Drive in Fredericksburg, 22401. The last time I spoke to you regarding a proposed baseball stadium in Celebrate Virginia, I was strongly opposed to the deal before you. Although I think having a minor league baseball team in Fredericksburg could be an asset to the community, I opposed the earlier deals because they were bad for the Fredericksburg taxpayer. Fortunately, many others believe this also. The deals never materialize. I am not opposed to the current proposal before you, but I do think it could be made more favorable to the city. The current proposal would commit the city to a $1.05 million payment to a private entity for thirty years. That is a generation. Your young children or grandchildren will still be making this payment when they are starting their families, buying their first homes, paying off student loans, and trying to save for retirement. You're to be commended for not including an inflation rider with this payment, at least the version I read didn't. But I would take bets on how long it will be before the team comes back to the city asking for the payment to be renegotiated to compensate for inflation. This scenario would most likely occur if the current owners decide to sell the team. The $1.05 million payment consists, constitutes 1.1% of the current Fredericksburg budget and will also remain so for several years until inflation reduces its impact. Although tax revenue generated by the stadium is supposed to cover this payment, it will take several years for this new revenue to get up to speed, during which time the difference will have to come from the operating budget. This will cause a ta, will this cause a tax increase or will other essential services or the education budget be cut to make up the difference? Several of the assumptions about the proposed stadium seem improbably rosy. Average attendance at baseball games is projected to be 21% greater than the team's current attendance. Prince William County has a 50% larger population than the Fredericksburg area. Why does anyone think that there will be a higher attendance in an area with a smaller population base? No doubt there'll be a surge in interest when the stadium opens, but will attendance hold up when the team is losing? Will baseball retain its popularity in the future? I've read many articles recently about the problems of Major League Baseball, especially in attracting younger fans to what youth consider a boring game. The World Series, just finishing up, the games all ended up after midnight, so how are young children supposed to be able to watch those? I know that most of my former colleagues' children were playing soccer and basketball and not baseball. Does the city really need to lease a stadium for over half a year? Does it have any expertise in organizing events in such a venue? Will the city have to hire additional personnel to oversee its stadium use? Will the city's use of the stadium generate new revenue or will it be a money-losing operation? I'd like to see some evidence that the city has a realistic plan for how it will use this leased venue. This deal has potential for the city, but I hope you will do your best to protect the taxpayers now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gratz. Because this is a special meeting and essentially all of the items are on the topic of baseball, if there's anyone else here who would like to speak, you may do so at this time. Please observe the five-minute limit and please state your name and address when you begin your talk.
I'd like to.
Go ahead.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Scott Dickey and I'm an Arlington County resident. I drove down here to speak on your potential CPACE program here. I work with a company called Sustainable Real Estate Solutions. We're a national CPACE program administrator and I'm the Director of Virginia's CPACE markets for the firm that I work with. And I wear two hats here in the state. One is that I administer the Arlington County CPACE program just up the street and I engage local jurisdictions around the Commonwealth to facilitate the reference to stand up new CPACE programs and expand the market here. To that end, I encourage you to support a local CPACE program for Fredericksburg. At the state level, the Virginia enacted enabling legislation in 2015. Now jurisdictions are working to enact their local ordinances and establish CPACE districts. Arlington County launched one earlier this year, January 2018. Fredericksburg will be the second jurisdiction in the Commonwealth, but the first city to launch a CPACE program. And this is an opportunity to provide your building owner and developer constituents with a new project finance option to improve their commercial buildings, energy and water systems. It's as simple as that. These programs are voluntary and economics-driven. Expanding the regional market is critical to the success of all the programs as the market participants, including the owners, the developers, the contractors, and the private capital providers, operate across political boundaries. And when they make a business decision to consider CPACE, the broader the market, the more likely they are to participate here, in Arlington, and all points in between as new programs launch over time. So all new programs are good, specifically for the local economy, but also for the other programs in the region as participation in one jurisdiction impacts that of all the others that have CPACE programs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dickey. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
My name's Gina Schiller and I live at 1706 Washington Avenue. And the gentleman that just spoke was saying that, you know, what was the ball team going to bring, you know, all the revenue and are they going to bring? The thing that I think a lot of people may be missing here is that Fredericksburg's already a city that attracts people, you know? It's a gem. People love the city of Fredericksburg. So they're just going to be expounding on that and they feel like they want to be part, they want to, you know, be part of the community. And I think that they're going to help that happen. So I think that, you know, to just say that, oh, it's just a ball organization that's coming is really, is really undershooting the whole picture. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Schiller. It is truly a multipurpose stadium, yes. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? All right, then we will proceed with the agenda. All of our agenda items are City Manager Agenda Items tonight, and I will call on the City Manager to set the stage for us and lead us off because some are voting items and some will be moved forward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a complex undertaking. I do want to take just a quick moment to commend staff for what is probably hundreds of hours' worth of work to advance this very important project. Appreciate the cooperation of the Silver family as well. Obviously, we are making good progress. We're here tonight to take action on just a couple items as you referenced. I will obviously highlight the fact that I have distributed to council members an amended roadmap. It is different than the roadmap we discussed just a week ago in slight ways, highlighted in red. Essentially, we're asking for your consideration of Item D, E, and G by vote tonight. Items A, B, and C, of course, are by transmittal and action is expected on A, B, and C on November thirteenth. Item F is not for action but for discussion. Again, that's a discussion related to the development and shared use agreement. That conversation will be led by Bill Freeling. So again, to sum it up, we are looking for action on Items D, E, and G. And Madam Mayor, Mike Craig is prepared to speak to Item D when you're ready.
All right. Excellent. So the items A, B, and C are merely on the agenda for transmittal to the November thirteenth meeting.
That's correct.
That's correct. So we will not have a presentation on those this evening. We have had a presentation previously on the CPACE and they will be, and they will be on the November thirteenth agenda. Just make sure everybody's clear. Then I should call on Senior Planner, Mr. Craig, for Item D.
Should the clerk read those transmittals?
That's a good idea. That's a very good idea. I will call upon our clerk to read the transmittals just so it's clear because the folks listening on television don't have agenda in front of them. Thank you, Counselor Duffy. All right, Madam Clerk, if you would read Items 5A, 5B, and 5C.
5A is a transmittal of resolution amending the comprehensive plan to provide for a public private use stadium with related transportation planning and land use planning area one. Celebrate Virginia South. 5B is a transmittal of resolution granting a special use permit to Celebrate Virginia South LLC, CVAS Parkway LLC, and CVAS Expo Center LLC for a stadium use in Celebrate Virginia South. And 5C is a transmittal of resolution adopting fees for the CPACE program.
And all three of these will be public hearing items?
Madam Mayor, the public hearing was held on amending the comp plan on 10/23, as was the matter of granting a special use permit. Again, both of those public hearings have been had.
Yep, those have been had.
Yes, ma'am. The resolution on adoption of fees for CPACE is a resolution requiring simply one reading.
And that simply requires one reading?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you very much. There are lots of moving parts to this. I'll try not to confuse anybody. All right. Thank you. Now, Mr. Craig.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I could have a computer, please. The focus of 5D is an ordinance before you all for first read vacating and realigning the existing Carl D. Silver right-of-way running through the property. To summarize the ordinance, I'll go through the existing conditions of the right-of-way, review the plan for extending Carl D. Silver Parkway, transmit the planning commission's findings, and give the recommendation on the project, which is to act on first read on ordinance in your packet. The proposed right-of-way is roughly 2.13 acres. You can see it here on the screen in orange. It is vacant and it will be realigned through the property to accommodate the stadium location, which is right here in the middle of the existing right-of-way. Excuse me. And to provide for a future connection through the site to Gordon W. Shelton Boulevard. This slide shows the existing right-of-way here where it ends at this northern boundary line, and there is no right-of-way currently on this property. And then this green here shows the proposed realignment that is contained within the general development plan for the stadium project. The next three slides will focus on the vacation and realignment of Carl D. Silver Parkway. Currently, what you see on the screen, Carl D. Silver Parkway ends at a T intersection with the northern entrance of the Expo Center. The intersection is going to be converted to a single-lane roundabout with the construction of the Silver Collection Apartments, and then will expand to a double roundabout with the construction associated with the stadium. Carl D. Silver Parkway will extend out of the roundabout, and this portion in blue here is within the current right-of-way, so it lines up, maybe a clearer picture is here. So what you see in blue and green is the same. This portion of blue is within the existing right-of-way. But here is the proposed stadium and it's right on top of the existing right-of-way. It is proposed to be realigned to the north-northwest. This is about where the property ends and about where the right-of-way would end. The realigned right-of-way will provide for a future connection. That's a positive for this development. To be clear, though, there are two major six-lane roads feeding the site. The connection is not necessary for the stadium to function, but it will be a positive in the future. During the technical review of the application and with the planning commission, the construction of the four-lane Carl D. Silver extension through the site was discussed. The developer will be required to construct the portion of the road needed to serve the stadium, and that's what's generally illustrated in green, to the northernmost extension of their required parking. A third condition of the vacation ordinance was contemplated. It discussed construction of the portions of Carl D. Silver Parkway beyond the stadium project. The condition was generated by technical analysis of the project and it was part of the presentation too and the recommendation from the planning commission. In order to focus on the stadium project, that third condition is not included in the draft ordinance. Didn't want to point that out. Here again is the functional design of what will be built within the Carl D. Silver Extended Right-of-Way. The realigned right-of-way is going to be reduced from 100 foot to 80 foot, and that's the section that you see before you here. It says 80-foot right-of-way. The critical planning criteria at this level of detail is to ensure that the right-of-way is functionally sufficient, that it's safe, and that it provides multimodal access. The typical section is shown on this screen. It would include a 10-foot shared-use trail, four total travel lanes, a median five-foot utility strips, and a five-foot sidewalk. The planning commission held two public hearings on the vacation items on the 12th and the 26th, after which they determined that the proposed right-of-way vacation complies with the comprehensive plan. That's their charge, is to make a determination that any proposed change to public facilities, vacation of right-of-way or a new public facility conforms to the comp plan, and that is what they determined. The draft ordinance in the packet includes two conditions, one with a couple of parts. The conditions require the rededication of the right-of-way, so this is a vacation ordinance, but it would also require that rededication in conformance with the general development plan. It also includes conditions that require the adjacent property owners to provide for any construction easements necessary to build the road extension in the future and also to provide additional right-of-way where turn lanes or other infrastructure requires it, and to ensure that no parcels are left landlocked where the right-of-way is shifted to ensure that all parcels retain access. The recommendation tonight is to act on this ordinance on first read, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Craig?
Madam Mayor, I'll move first read, approving the proposed vacation of the unapproved portion of the Carl D. Silver Parkway right-of-way.
Second. Motion's been made in secondedness. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right. Item 5E, I will call on our Economic Development Director, Mr. Freeling, and our City Attorney, Ms. Dooley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a first reading for a Clean Energy Ordinance that will help establish Fredericksburg as a progressive leader in environmentally friendly policies and innovative financing programs. A public hearing on this matter is scheduled for November 13th, and a second reading could follow that hearing if that is the will of council. This matter involves the Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy Program. CPACE, as it is known, is an innovative way to finance clean energy and water efficiency projects on new and existing commercial and multifamily buildings. This program, if enacted by City Council, could be used to help finance the multipurpose stadium, as well as future new construction and rehabilitation projects in Fredericksburg, as Mr. Gerlock said in his comments. This program, in addition to its environmental benefits, can help incentivize the rehabilitation of historic buildings, the enhancement of the real property tax base, and the promotion of employment and economic growth in the city. By setting up a CPACE program, a locality can enable private sector loans for 100% of total project costs by placing a special assessment lien on the property that the owner repays over time. The cost of the special assessment is intended to be offset by the savings on the borrower's utility bills due to the upfront investment in energy efficiency upgrades. So far, Arlington County, as was mentioned previously, is the only Virginia locality that has adopted a CPACE ordinance, and similar programs are in the works in Loudon and Fairfax. No CPACE loans have yet been made in Fredericksburg, although they have been used throughout the U.S., including at the new Audi Field in Washington. Ms. Dooley will now speak to more of the more, to some of the more technical aspects of PACE, and either one of us would be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Freeling. I'll focus the comments tonight simply on the voluntary special assessment lien. This is the aspect of the CPACE program that sets it apart from a purely private loan program. Under the special voluntary assessment lien, the CPACE loan is secured by a lien against the real estate, and that lien has equal priority as a real estate tax lien does. The special assessment is billed and collected by the treasurer on the same schedule that we bill and collect real estate taxes. In order for the lien to have that special priority, it would outrank any other lien on the property except for our real estate taxes. If there are an existing lien holder, for example, if there's already a mortgage on the property, then that lender must sign an agreement saying, "We agree for this special assessment to take priority over our loan." A lot of times, the private lender will agree to do that because they'll see the added value to the property and they understand that typically a CPACE loan would not have an acceleration clause, so it would continue to run with the land. And they also see the added value to the marketability of the property, et cetera. One other statutory provision that we're taking advantage of for our CPACE program is an early collection option. Under Virginia Code, if a CPACE loan becomes delinquent, it can be foreclosed upon by the treasurer within basically one year of the delinquency. For real estate taxes, we have to wait for two years, so that one year is added protection not only for the private lender but also for the city. Now, I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Dooley or Mr. Freeling?
The tax law that you were just talking about, so that's going to protect the city from, like what happened with the whole slave museum thing? That was a tax right, you know? Wasn't that kind of what we were talking about here? How is this different? Am I wrong?
We don't usually take questions from the audience, but this is a, this, no, this is a different, this is, this is a, that's all right, Ms. Schilling. This is a different situation, and you pose an interesting question. Ms. Dooley, I'll, we'll answer it for you, okay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We certainly did have our experience with the Community Development Authority in Celebrate Virginia South in mind as we were drafting this ordinance, and so we've built several protections in, and there are very many distinctions between this loan program and the CDA loan program. If you think about the CDA loan, it was, in terms of the schedule of development, the CDA loan was taken out when the land was entirely undeveloped, and that loan financed the construction of public streets, utilities, and public sewer at a relatively speculative point in the development process. A CPACE loan comes at the opposite end of the schedule for development. In other words, all the infrastructure would be in and the building owner, if it's an existing structure, or the building, the person who's about to build a new building, they would obtain the CPACE loan right before they get, or at the same time basically as they get the building permit. So you're at, you're at the most secure point in the development schedule as opposed to the more speculative point for the CDA loan. That's one of the distinctions, that, and we've built in additional protections based on the CDA experience to not repeat that experience.
Yeah, thank you. That is one question that many people have had, so I'm glad to have an opportunity to answer that. Yes, Counselor Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I noticed here that the minimum number of units for a multifamily dwelling, it's five, that, right, that's the minimum. But what about a mixed-use building? I know we have a lot of buildings downtown where we have the retail on the bottom, but there are residential units on the top. How do those fit into that? Are they? Are they eligible for CPACE? Because I think there are potentially a lot of businesses or, you know, just properties downtown that fit this mixed-use development that could really benefit from this kind of program, and I just want to make sure that they would be eligible.
The way we've written the ordinance is to say that all property in the city is eligible except for residential property of four units or fewer. So a mixed-use structure would, I believe, still be eligible for the program, and that is straight out of the statute.
Okay, great. Just wanted to check the loophole. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions? Councilor Devine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to clarify the timeframe, because I like that a lot of the focus is on rehabilitating our older buildings, but we're not just talking about historic buildings. We're talking about buildings that are at least, I think it's 40 years old. So buildings that are 40 years old could also be renovated and take advantage of the CPACE. Is that correct?
Yes. Madam Mayor and Councilor Devine, the CPACE program is available for any existing building, regardless of age--
Okay.
--and new construction. It's a very broadly applicable program.
Okay.
And the qualifier is the qualifying improvements and the underwriting criteria. That's the criteria that a lender and a borrower are going to have to meet in order to participate in the program.
Thank you. All right, this is before us tonight as a first read. It will come back for a second read.
Mayor?
November 13th.
I just have a quick comment.
Sure.
I just want to commend staff for bringing this novel approach to the city of Fredericksburg. It speaks well for all of us. Thank you.
I would agree.
Madam Mayor, as a member of the Clean and Green Commission, I'd be happy to, first read, that we approve on first read the creation of a program for financing clean energy improvements known as CPACE.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes seven-zero.
All righty. For item 5F, I will also call upon our Economic Development Director, Mr. Freeling, and our City Attorney, Ms. Dooley, who have spent a lot of time on the development and the shared use agreement. And this is the agreement that determines how the multipurpose stadium benefits the city, really.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, City Council, and members of the Fredericksburg community, this is an exciting night for our proud city. In many ways, it represents the culmination of six years of effort to land a minor league baseball team and multipurpose stadium in Fredericksburg. Before Ms. Dooley and I get into the details of the matter before you, I hope you will indulge me with a brief trip down memory lane to offer some context of how we got to this point. About six years ago, the late Paul Akers wrote a series of editorials for the Freelance Star advocating for a minor league baseball team as a way to unite our community. It was clear that Fredericksburg was an excellent market for minor league baseball, and that was confirmed by well-regarded baseball analytic firm Brailsford &amp; Dunleavy. Not long after Paul wrote his influential columns, and as a direct result, the city began speaking to the owners of the Hagerstown Suns about the possibility of the Suns relocating to a new stadium in Fredericksburg Celebrate Virginia South development. City staff and council spent countless hours trying to make the Suns' deal work. The conversation began with a proposal for a publicly financed stadium and eventually evolved into a privately financed complex that would have also involved the Diamond Nation facility for travel sports tournaments. That deal ultimately fell apart due to a variety of factors that I won't get into here tonight. The city learned many valuable lessons from that first 21st-century courtship with professional baseball. It discovered that it indeed wanted a professional baseball team and stadium, as long as it could be on terms that were financially prudent. The city agreed with Paul Akers' opinions about how a minor league baseball team and stadium have the ability to bring a community together, provide a first-class venue for various events, and offer a quality-of-life amenity. As a result, building a stadium and attracting a team on financially advantageous terms became goals that were inserted into the city's most important documents, including the Comprehensive Plan, Economic Development Strategic Plan, and City Council's vision and desired future states and 35 priorities for our community. What we didn't know at the time is that one of the most important things that came out of the conversation with the Suns was the relationship we developed with one of the key people in the matter before you tonight. I'm confident that this man, Art Silver, is watching us tonight from his home in Florida. Hello, Art. Art, who likes to tell of his boyhood love for baseball, growing up in Brooklyn during the Jackie Robinson era, has owned the Potomac Nationals for almost three decades and coached first base for much of that time, wearing Robinson's number 42. The Peanuts, as they are known, play in an outdated stadium in Woodbridge and are the Class A affiliate of the Washington Nationals. While Fredericksburg was trying to make a deal work with the Suns, Art was negotiating with Prince William County for a new stadium there, as it happens also very near Interstate 95 and a Wegmans grocery store. At the time, I was a business writer for the Freelance Star, covering the Suns' story and making daily harassing phone calls to then-city manager Bev Cameron and some current members of city council. I developed a relationship with Art, who helped me understand the Suns' deal and various facets of the business of minor league baseball. I remember thinking that while it was exciting that the Suns were interested in Fredericksburg, it was the Peanuts that were the most logical team for our city. If the Suns had come and the Peanuts had stayed, Art's ball club would have been a formidable competitor to our team. Better to remove the competitor and make them the hometown team, I thought at the time. A little over a year ago, I read that Art's stadium negotiations with Prince William had hit a wall. Fortunately, I still had his phone number in my list of contacts, and Mr. Barudy and I decided it was worth a call. Fortunately, Art took our call, and we began talking about the possibility of the team moving to Fredericksburg. After being further introduced to Fredericksburg and its community leaders, the Silbers became charmed by our city's sense of place, strong demographics, and business-friendly attitude. In short, they became sold on Fredericksburg as the right place for the team to be. Over the past year, we have developed strong relationships with Art, his children Lonnie and Seth, and Art's good friend Peter Kirk, who has built more than a dozen professional baseball stadiums, owned minor league teams, and been a key consultant during this process. Lonnie and Peter are all here tonight, are here tonight. Not quite four months ago, we announced this project to the community and entered into a letter of intent with Art's ball club to build a 5,000-seat stadium in Celebrate Virginia South. We believe this facility will be a wonderful new amenity for our community. The list of things we can do there is unlimited, but among the highlights are professional baseball games, holiday light shows, high school and college games, an ice rink, business meetings, holiday parties, parks and rec camps, concerts, and an array of events and sporting contests. Located just to the north of the Fredericksburg Expo Center, it will breathe new life into Celebrate Virginia South and help fulfill the original vision of this tourism-oriented development. It will also give us a valuable venue to tell our city's great story to thousands of residents and visitors on 70 spring and summer evenings. It will be a place where area high school students can experience their first jobs and where families can gather over cold beer, cheap hot dogs, and fireworks to watch rising baseball stars, hilarious between-innings activities, and post-game running of the bases. Here are some renderings of what the stadium will look like. These are all on FredericksburgBaseball.com for people that want to take a closer look. As I said, 5,000-seat stadium with a club level. I won't do justice to all the details. Mr. Kirk can do that if he wants to get into more of the details, but as you can see, that's just north of the Expo Center. It'll be, have about 13 suites, a club level, a party deck, a crab shack, fixed seats with backs, a nice media room, it'd be a great meeting space for, space for meetings. You can see a 360 concourse around the stadium. Good opportunities for sponsors. Indeed, the team's been very aggressive in meeting with members of our business community to line up additional sponsors to help finance this stadium. There'll be a plan to do a history exhibit and to tell our city's rich history along the concourse and the outfield. And here's a play area along the right field entrance that Mary Washington Healthcare is going to be sponsoring. And there's a look at the stadium, and there's a video board there. One of the things that the city will get, the marketing aspects that the city will get, will be a video ad every game, 60 seconds, that we can tell many aspects of our great story to first-time visitors and longtime residents. That's a look at some of the images of what the stadium will look like. All right, now let's get down to brass tacks. How to pay for this stadium, whose price tag is estimated at $35 million. City council made clear years ago that any stadium built in Fredericksburg would have to be privately financed. We are a small community with many demands on our resources, and we strive to be good stewards. Fortunately, the Silbers also prefer to privately own stadiums. However, it was clear from the start that if the project were going to happen, the city would need to be an important backer. We would need to be the anchor tenant that would help the family get the stadium financed, which they are now working to finalize. The number that the team would need from the city to make the project financially feasible was $1.05 million a year for 30 years, the Silbers told us after months of conversations and negotiations. Much of our focus then became how the city could generate enough money from the project to make it pay for itself. We believe we have now figured that out. There are three main buckets of revenue associated with this project. First is the tax revenue, which we estimate at $700,000 a year based on the two Brailsford &amp; Dunleavy studies that were done in 2013. Second is the revenue we believe we can generate from our ability to use the stadium ourselves up to 183 days a year. For the first 10 years, we plan, with city council concurrence, to enter into a revenue-sharing agreement with the Peanuts that will allow the team to run all concerts and paid admissions events at the stadium on our behalf. We believe this will generate another $250,000 a year for the city. We will have more detail for you on this part of the agreement at your meeting on November 13th. Finally, we are negotiating an agreement with the Celebrate Virginia South Owners Association for a $100,000 annual payment to the city for 30 years. In addition to helping us pay for the stadium, this money will allow us to provide valuable marketing exposure at the ballpark for the businesses at Celebrate Virginia and throughout the city. Again, we'll have more detail for you on this agreement on the 13th. Added together, these three revenue sources total $1.05 million. This does not account for the possibility of additional revenue being generated outside the stadium, although we are sure there will be some of that from hotel night stays and more. Nor does it factor that the city's payment is fixed for 30 years, and even at a modest 1.5% inflation rate, our projected revenue from the stadium would be worth nearly $1.6 million a year by the end of the 30-year term. Much work still remains to be done before opening day in April 2020. In fact, much work remains to be done over the next two weeks to finalize all the various aspects of this deal. Your city attorney, Kathleen Dooley, deserves ample credit for her ability to put all these diverse agreements to legally binding paper, and I will soon stop talking and allow her to go over some more technical aspects of this agreement. We are not asking for a vote tonight on this development and shared use agreement, but we do hope to be ready for votes at your November 13th meeting on this, the various land use matters associated with the stadium, and several other elements that have been mentioned tonight. And I'll now turn things over to Ms. Dooley.
Bill and I had practiced having him pitch the remote to me. I know, it was not to be.
Oh, we could have given you the right apparatus to catch it.
I told him if he could get the throw-in, I'd be sure to catch it, but took out the live entertainment portion of this evening's meeting. All right, I am going to review the contract itself at a very high level. I have three slides that cover some background issues, and then seven slides that go into more of the details of the agreement, so you can count to 10, you can count down as we go. When I say the club, I mean Potomac Baseball LLC. That's what they're called in the agreement, so that's what I just call them. So the club made a proposal to the city council in June 2018, and the club's proposal was a two-page document that summarized the benefits to the city from the stadium. It was organized in categories of stadium, team, community, marketing, and use. And that proposal is the basis of today's draft agreement. City council used that proposal as the basis for the letter of intent that we signed on July 11th, 2018. At that point, we had an 11-page roadmap for how we proposed to reach the definitive agreement. Now you have the 33-page development and shared use agreement, which grew directly out of those foundation documents. It has been constructed by the club and the city to form a sound basis for our relationship for 30 years. One of the goals in developing the 30-year agreement was to try to bake in a structure for ongoing communication, cooperation, mutual understanding, and goodwill that will be key to success in the long term. We included in our agreement several requirements to provide that structure. First, we create an advisory board. That will have four members, two from the city and two from the club. The board will meet at least twice a year and more often if needed. The agreement assigns the advisory board broad purview over all aspects of stadium operation and maintenance, but its role will be advisory only. One early assignment to this board will be an environmental policy for the stadium. The board is also assigned to meet in years 20 and 25 to begin to plan for the end of the development and shared use agreement term. In addition to the advisory board, you see a senior executive. The club will designate a senior executive so that the city has direct connection to a person who has authority to make decisions on behalf of the club. And the club and the city will each appoint a single representative. That may be the senior executive for the club, but this also will be a high-level person with a lot of authority to manage the implementation of the agreement over the years. And finally, what we used in the agreement for scheduling the use of the stadium is that those discussions will take place year-round. And we did that after researching some of the uses of minor league baseball stadiums in other localities, where sometimes the agreement itself will say, "We will meet on January 1, and we will make our schedule." We said, "How does that work out in real life?" And they said, "That's not how it works." As a matter of fact, scheduling is an ongoing obligation for both the club and the community. All right, there are two major backstops to our agreement as well, and they provide additional context for our agreement terms. First is the rules of Major League Baseball. They establish standards and enforcement mechanisms for minor league teams and stadiums. Major League Baseball clearly is interested in preserving the value of its brand of entertainment, and it sets high standards for field maintenance, for the financial position of minor league franchisees, and they have strict penalties for non-compliance. The other concept that we used for our agreement is called comparable facilities, and we wanted to use some other minor league baseball multipurpose facilities that were recently constructed. They're at least as large as ours, if not larger. The Fayetteville Ballpark is under construction today. Spirit Communications Park in Columbia, South Carolina, was constructed in 2016. Parkview Stadium in Fort Wayne, Indiana, was built in 2008, and BB&amp;T Ballpark was built in 2010. If you go to those websites, you'll see that these are all very lively and attractive community assets. So both the baseball rules and the comparable facilities provide some backdrop for our agreement. Bill has walked through the financial terms, and all I will say is that the city's funding commitment of $1.05 million per year covers all the costs that we'll talk about, all the operation and maintenance of the stadium. We identified two categories of additional costs for the city. One would be if the stadium is damaged during a city event, then the city will have to pay the actual and direct cost of repair to the club. And the second category of costs relates to specialized services that we might seek from the club that are over and above the standard stadium operation and maintenance services. In this instance, the club will provide us an annual rate car. It will cover labor costs only, not equipment rental fees, for example, and these would be specialized services like the use of that HD video board that Mr. Freeling showed on his slides. And the revenues portions are also fairly straightforward, and as covered by Mr. Freeling. We also, the termination payment that was referred to in the letter of intent became, is just termed in this agreement a lump-sum payment, and it would kick in in an event of a non-appropriation of the annual commitment. Okay. Stadium construction. The club will build the stadium in substantial conformance with the plans that they have submitted and that Mr. Freeling-- in the field, changes for engineering, or changes that are simply necessary or desirable without coming back for an amendment of the agreement, but it also assures the city of the substance of its agreement. There will be, there may be changes in the details of the stadium, but substantially, you know what you're getting. The club is attempting to meet an April one, twenty twenty opening day goal, and what the agreement sets is a twenty twenty-one deadline to provide the city a stopping point. We've included these sunset clauses in previous agreements, and we felt that it was a good thing to have here. The club will use qualified and competitive local firms and suppliers when it's feasible to do so. They'll be hiring a general contractor to handle construction, so this provision will likely be direction to the general contractor to make an effort to work with local firms and suppliers. And finally, we'll have an, the right to inspect the construction work for conformance with the plans. Stadium operation. You'll see in section five of the agreement, the, this is fairly simple. The club will operate the stadium on a year-round basis for all events, and that's an all-in operations obligation, including all aspects of the operation of the stadium. Stadium maintenance, once again, is a comprehensive obligation of the club. We're holding them to a good repair, attractive appearance, and good operating condition standard. All major and minor maintenance, restoration, repair, replacement, and importantly, this includes the parking lot and snow removal, as the stadium is proposed to be in use year-round. Under the team category of commitments, the club will maintain the minor league baseball franchise. The team name will begin with Fredericksburg, and they'll be playing their home games in the stadium. The community and marketing obligations come, again, straight out of that June twenty eighteen proposal and the letter of intent. These were numerous benefits to the community, community involvement, and specific marketing benefits to the city itself. And finally, this is my final slide. The city's use of the stadium in the final agreement is as proposed, to be one hundred and eighty-three days per year. One of the things that, one of the ideas that we fleshed out during our discussions was that the stadium can accommodate multiple uses on any particular day, so there might be a wellness class in the morning, maybe field maintenance in the afternoon, and then a home baseball game that night. In a way, there's more than three hundred and sixty-five days a year. The critical piece will be scheduling the use of the stadium. This is one of those places where our mutual interests in the best, highest and best use of the stadium and its highest level of maintenance and repair may come into some amount of conflict with our individual desires for the scheduling of events. And so we built in a very robust scheduling provision that sets priorities for scheduling events in the stadium and recognizes the club's obligation to maintain the stadium and the field itself in good repair. So that's a high-level review of the business terms of the agreement as it's landed. As you see, it's very much like what you saw in June twenty eighteen and what you saw in July, and it's just become thirty-three pages. Insert lawyer joke here. Thank you very much.
Obviously, this has been much discussed, much compromised to certain extent, but mostly been a very, very good discussion with, on certain very key elements that were agreed upon from the beginning, because the, the team wanted to be here and we wanted them, and they offered us, you know, what we were looking for, which was the, they are building a stadium, and are not fronting the money for the thirty-four, thirty-five million-dollar stadium. And we had a way to, we had a way to, to get the multipurpose venue that the city would like, very much like to have and will make very good use of, and, and a way to have revenue from it so that we could make our contribution for the lease. So from the beginning, we've had productive discussions, not total agreement, but productive discussions, wouldn't you say? It's been a very good experience so far. Council Devine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I would just like to commend staff, and it's, and Mr. Freeling and Ms. Dooley, who presented today, I know have done a tremendous amount of work, but so has almost every staff member. So I just want to thank all of you for making this work, because you're making it work for, for the city, and it's just tremendous. And I'd like to thank the Silber families for being so willing to work and communicate easily with us, and I, and for really jumping into the community already. You know, I've, I've seen your presence in so many ways, and it's just been nice to know that it really already seems to be a very deep partnership. So I'm just very excited about this, this process. I did have one question, and really, it's one of those things, as I was reading through things, I think it's section fifteen, and you had mentioned it, the deadline to open, and I just, it's one of those things, I read through the, and I go, "Or what?" You know, if the deadline is April first, twenty twenty-one, realistically, what does that mean? If they don't open by twenty twenty-one, what are we, what will we actually do? That's a good question.
Madam Mayor, the city would have the right, but not the obligation, to terminate the contract at that point.
Or extend, I assume.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Absolutely, extend the contract at that point. It's, sometimes when the, and we, this is a typical provision that we include in economic development contracts. At some point, you realize that the project, in fact, is not going to come to fruition, and at that point, as the cities, we want to kind of move that liability off our books and move on.
Would, and maybe I missed it in here, but is there a date to commence building? Like, I see a date to...
The construction period is not covered by this document. We're, we're looking to find out, when will the stadium be open, because that's when we can start to use it.
Okay, I just, you know, again, you read that, like, what are we gonna do? Like, oop, not open, sorry, we're done. So I just want to make sure that, but, but I guess I would love to see a commenced build date, you know?
Well, would that be part of the SUP?
There's a, Madam Mayor, there are...
We are talking here about the shared use agreement.
Right.
And the other, other thing that council has to decide on is the approval of the special use permit.
Yes, ma'am.
Still, we'll have...
Even there, we don't have a, a construction commencement date, but the club is negotiating not only multiple transactions with the city, but also loan commitments and a ground lease commitment, and they will have construction commencement dates that will be driven by those agreements instead.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Council Frye.
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw, and I would like to echo Council Devine's comments about city staff and all the work that's been going into this, and I hope that the, the residents of Fredericksburg are happy, happier now than they were a few years ago. I remember just getting a whole bunch of questions, and it just, it was looking bad a few years ago, I'll publicly say that. I remember a ten-million-dollar parking facility that kind of just kept escalating, and there were no cars in the parking lot, but, but the price kept going up. But I do want to say, for the, for the future, and I know this will come back as well, but with any talks in the future, one thing that, and I'm not going to go into a long spiel about it, but one thing that's missing in the city of Fredericksburg is, is diversity. We have it, but we're trying to work on it in the city right now. So anybody that comes into the city, I want, I want you guys to remember that, city staff and, and, and the baseball partners in this situation. When it comes to events and so on and so forth, just reach out to us or whatever, and I mean, just whatever the communication has to be. But I will say this, that we, we have to do better with diversity, especially with events and different things. I like all types of music and so on and so forth, whatever it is. I could go into all of that right now, but I'm not going to do it, but we have to have something for everybody, and if you look at the list of events, if you look at last year's concert series, it's, it's pretty ridiculous when it comes to variety. So I'm just putting it out there for everybody to, to know that we have to do better. And if we're bringing something new, then it's time to start fresh with that, so that's all I want to add, just for, for all conversations about, because we, we can't talk about how we can bring folks together, and, and then we look at the schedule two years from now, and like, wait a minute, who are we bringing together? So I just wanted to add that, and, and, not, not promoting music, but music brings all kinds of folks together, and I think everybody knows that. But when it comes to this events, we, we had to have more diversity, so I'm kind of throwing that, that diversity ball to the team now, before we even make it to the finish point, so thank you.
Thank you, Council Frye. Vice Mayor Weathers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been kind of quiet on this, but as staff knows, I've, I've taken a lot of that time asking a lot of questions in the back rooms and, and of course, to the Silber, the Silber family. I, I just want to say, you know, I feel good about this. You know, there's certain deals you're into that you, you don't feel real good about because of relationships, but this, this one, it sounds, it, it looks good to me. I will say that for those who, who worry about it, I don't think there's any question there, it's some risk. I think it's minimal, but, but that's, that's part of this. I, I think that the, that the advantages just far away any, any fear of risk. I think this is going to be a huge, huge help for the, for the city of Fredericksburg, and I appreciate everyone's effort in doing that, and especially staff's effort in putting up with me on the thousand questions that I've asked over the last several months. So thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, staff, and thank you, the Silber family.
There's no further discussion? I, I'm sure it's obvious to, to all concerned that this has been a prime object of our attention, staff and council, for quite a while, but we are very, very pleased to bring what we feel is a wonderful opportunity to the city of Fredericksburg, and we thank the Silber family. And would you like to say something, Lonnie? Please.
Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor, Greenlaw, and City Council. So I'm Lonnie Silber Weiss, and I am here representing the Silber family. Unfortunately, my dad couldn't come up, and my brother had to be an attorney today in California, so he couldn't be here, but our consultant and very close dear friend Peter Kirk is here, as Bill said. Just from our perspective, to echo again what you all have said, the relationship and the, the air of cooperation that we have experienced with everybody in the city, from our meetings we've encountered with you, Mayor, and with the city staff, and with the Department of Economic Development, and the city manager, everybody, it's been an air of what I would just call cooperation and problem solving. So as you stated, we might not have always agreed when we sat down at the table and we started out maybe here, not, you know, on, in terrible disagreement, but we would sit at the table and, and Mr. Rudy in particular said, "We're going to come to a solution." And we would talk, and we would inch our way in, and we would come to a reasonable solution that was satisfactory to all of us, where there was some give and take. And so I just wanted to kind of expound on that, as our experience for my family and from our business, how much we appreciate that experience with the entire city and every, all your representatives. It's been a wonderful experience since the first time we came down and met with Bill, and he ambushed us at the hotel with everybody. And we appreciate being courted. We hope that we have kind of courted you all. We are enamored with the city. We are enamored with the business community and the residents, and we know that Fredericksburg is the perfect place for our team to thrive and for our business to thrive. It's the perfect place, as Bill said, for a minor league team, Fredericksburg. It's a little bit larger of a, a market than many of the markets around the country, but because of the community aspect that's here, and the defined city and then the surrounding communities and counties, it will, it will absolutely succeed, and it's, there are examples of that all over the country, and Fredericksburg is even a better example than some of those. And we will have great crowds because we're going to have such great amenities, which unfortunately, we don't have now, and that we are thrilled to be able to offer and the multi-use aspects of it too. So I just want to thank you all for everything that we've experienced so far with you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further discussion of item five F, the Development Shared Use Agreement, we will proceed to the resolution extending the terms of the letter of intent. And I'll call upon Mr. Freeling to explain that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This feels a little anticlimactic, but this matter involves the extension of the letter of intent with Potomac Baseball LLC to November twenty-eighth. On July tenth, city council approved an LOI with the team to explore the potential agreement regarding the stadium. The LOI was signed by both the city manager and Lonnie on July eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, the, the day after the, the city council hearing. The LOI established a one hundred and twenty-day study period that is scheduled to expire on November eighth. Potomac Baseball LLC has agreed to extend the LOI to November twenty-eighth. The schedule for final council approvals remains November thirteenth, but this extension would include a little additional time if needed. So staff recommends that council adopt a resolution agreeing to extend the LOI period to November twenty-eighth.
Madam Mayor, I move extending the terms of the letter of intent with Potomac Baseball LLC for the approval of definitive agreement related to a multi-use outdoor recreational venue.
Motion's been made and seconded. Please cast your votes.
Motion. Seven, zero.
We will now go into a closed session. Would someone please read the motion? Yes?
I move the resolution extent, excuse me, for the Code of Virginia, two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-eight-thirty-nine for discussion of proprietary information voluntarily provided by the Potomac Baseball LLC pursuant to a promise of confidentiality and memorandum prepared by the city of Fredericksburg relating to Potomac Baseball, where competition or bargaining is involved, and where disclosure of such information would adversely affect the financial interests of the city. And by the Code of Virginia, two dot two-dash-three-seven-eleven-eight-eight for consultation with the city attorney related to the Development and Shared Use Agreement with Potomac Baseball LLC and related legal instruments.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. We will adjourn to upstairs for, not adjourn, but we will proceed to the upstairs suite for the closed session.
Mayor, can you do...
Oh, we have to vote. We have to vote. Go sit down, Council Frye.
He already voted.
Please cast your vote to go into closed session.
Motion passes, seven, zero.
Okay. I thank everybody who was here tonight.